Greetings, this is Brian Harris, Independent Black Voters on Facebook. We are continuing our series of Get to Know Your Candidates. We are now talking to Ms. Irene Adams, who is running for the school board. We want to find out what she thinks about the school board. We want to find out why she ran for the school board, and we want to know something about her. So, Ms. Adams, first of all, welcome and thank you for taking the time to be interviewed.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate you having me.
Okay, great. So, we'll start off. Tell me a little bit about you, and tell me your reasoning and rationale for deciding you wanted to be on the school board.
Well, Las Vegas is my home. I moved here back when, in the 1990s, when things were starting to boom. This is where I met my husband and got married, and we raised our girls within the Clark County School District. We are now grandparents of our first grandchild, so this is home. I'm also worked, I worked at MGM Mirage for about 20 years, and focused on diversity, philanthropy, community engagement in my time there. And so, diversity means a lot to me, especially at, in construction, when we were building city center, making sure that we were giving opportunities to small minority women-owned businesses. So, that was one of my greatest accomplishments there, among other things. And then I went off to be a legislator for about eight years. Definitely a financial sacrifice to serve the public in that way. Did another 180, and now I'm with the local workforce board to get people back to work. I've been there about four and a half years, and loving the job, and decided to put my name in the school district hat, because I'm doing a lot in workforce development, making sure that our kids have opportunities to get a livable wage and be on career pathways, whether you go to college or not.
Great, thank you. Well, obviously, we need to do something different. We're pretty low as far as the overall ranking of our school systems. We've got some major problems. We're looking for people who have solutions and can basically help us bring the school system up to the level it should be. So, tell me, just from your perspective, first of all, what do you think? So, people are, what is the responsibility, challenge of the school board? And then tell me, what do you think are the problems we have? And how we fix it from the perspective of having you on the school board? What would be your priorities, thoughts, and beliefs that what we need to do?
Well, obviously, the school board, Clark County, the rapid growth that we have had over the last couple of years. I think that as a state, just an example is the People Funding Formula. We started it in a way when we were very small, and then our growth, we have not kept up with advancing the model. So, as a school board, same application, where we started off with a few kids, and now we have, you know, we're the fifth largest school district in the US. That's huge. And when I talk to leaders across the US, that's how I describe ourselves. So, one, the school board, keeping up with the model with the expansive growth has been a challenge. Number two, I think somewhere along the way, we disconnected from the business community, because you as a business owner should be at the center of the conversations, letting us know the type of workforce that you need. I think we got very soft and depending on the hospitality and gaming as our only bread and butter employer, and we forgot to diversify. So, our kids may not be meeting the skill sets that the employers may need. And then I think, thirdly, because of the diversification of people moving into Las Vegas, we lost focus on kids that look like you and I, do not start at the same starting point as other kids. And so, we do not get the opportunities to have the access that we need, and that creates the inequalities that you see now, why some of our neighborhoods are not thriving and others are. And so, that would be one of my priorities, is to look at that data and work on pre-case seats, so that the kids have a great starting point, making sure that kids understand and the school counselors know that not every child is set to go to a four-year university, that there are other paths available and very lucrative. And then number three is, obviously, the, right now, the priority is school safety. Parents want to feel safe, kids want to feel safe, staff want to feel safe. So, that would be a top three. There are so many, so many issues, Brian, that you know that need to be tackled, but that's where I would start.
Great, okay. So, I'm going to start number three. You talked about school safety. Obviously, they just spent, what was it, $20 million on one school? To put in, uh, put in some security features. What's your opinion on that?
I think that, and I've said it before, one, for school safety, we have to do it together as a community. It's not just the school district's problem. So, number one, I would say that the investment is a step in the right direction, but we need to have that as a comprehensive measure, not just at a couple of schools. And so, we need to work together, and that's when I say "we", I'm talking about the business community, I'm talking about other community leaders. I'm talking about faith-based organizations, right? There has to be a comprehensive approach, so that it addresses parents, students, staff, together. And I would also say that, like I said, it's a step in the right direction. It's not a simple, one thing takes care of it all approach, but I'm grateful for the step in the right direction. There has to be not only a no tolerance, but also restorative justice for those who do cross the line, because we have evidence-based models that prove that, yeah, you make a mistake, but there might be other things going on in that child's life where we can make the corrections.
Okay, wait. So, tell me, you talked about a couple of things, restorative justice and issues, which is correct. But if you look at many people, they talk about school choice as almost being the end-all, be-all to saving, saving the school system. What's your opinion on how we should fix it? And do you think, and what's your opinions on school choice?
So, I just want to make sure you, I understand the question. So, school choice is that opportunity scholarship, where you could take your money and put your child in a school that may not be within the, your region's boundary. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. So, short answer, yes, I would, school choice is important. I think, we're a military family, and so, when my husband was deployed on his third deployment, we needed school choice. We had to enroll in an online virtual platform, and that's when it wasn't popular. I needed that for my family in order to keep my kids in a learning environment that worked for where we were in our journey. And so, I do support school choice, because traditional models don't work for every single child. And so, and that's been proven by the pandemic, that some did well, and others have not returned to the classroom, because they prefer virtual and are doing phenomenally. But, and so, I think it's a balance. I think it's a balance. I think that the school district, with the help of the community, because they're the ones that led, the business leaders, they figured out how to get all kids connected virtually, but it doesn't work for everybody. So, I would just refer back to that. It depends on the child. Not every teacher can teach virtually, so that may not be a good option. So, it depends.
So, and help me understand, in school choice, you have the vouchers. You're able to use your money at private schools, at religious-based schools, et cetera, correct?
That is correct.
And see, here's a concern, and I'll put it the way, being an African-American, who was born in the 60s, at the beginning of the 60s, who saw the fight for integration and the fight for better school systems, who grew up in a public school system and has an MBA from Purdue University, has an undergrad in electrical engineering, and I came through a school system that was destroyed later because of economic imbalance. It leads, it concerns us that, when I was growing up, if you wanted to go to a private school, you spent the extra money and went to a private school. If you wanted to go to a church school, you spent the money and then went to a church school. That was your choice, but you didn't get money from the government to make that choice. Anytime you take, if you make a decision to leave the public school system, the money should stay in the public school system and not be reallocated. Because, see, segregation was always about one group having more and one group having less. Many times, these sound good, but I'll give you an example. I live in Henderson. There's been a talk of breaking up the school systems. Of course, if I'm just happy with Henderson, I can break up the school systems. I can put more money into my school systems, because I don't have to worry about the other school systems now, because we have great property taxes, we have a great base of community of business, and so, those, the haves get more, have less, and the haves get more, have more. So, I ask that question, because that's one of those things that sounds good to the haves, but is very precarious to the have-nots, because the schools that will close will be the marginalized communities. The schools now, it's not, it's bad enough that you're in an area that has a low economic base, but now you have to leave school. So, those are the ones who don't have the money are going to be left behind in worse shape. And again, it just smells of, from the perspective of the black community, is the beginning of the re-implementation of segregation and the reallocation of funds away from the people that have less, back to the people that have more. So, what do you think about that statement I just said?
I think that there is truth to that matter as well, right? So, I know of a parent whose child did not go back to CCSD, and instead, they took that money and are using the voucher to place their son into a different school because of being bullied at that school. So, that has merit. But in addition, I think that that's where you're talking about is balance. You're talking about balance, and you're right. If you're going to, like, Matt Kelly Elementary School, who is surrounded by public housing, and is probably one of the lowest-performing schools, it's not in District F, but those individuals, those parents may not have the option to move. And so, I think it's a balance. I think we need to, I don't have the most updated data on the school choice vouchers. The last time I saw, there was a mixture of ethnicities and gender that were using the school choice. It wasn't only Caucasian kids to go to private schools. So, it is a balance. There are some families of African-American descent or Hispanic descent that do want that option to send their kids to somewhere different. But it is a balance, because kids like at Matt Kelly, their parents don't, may not have the option now to take that money and go somewhere else. And so, what we have to do and what we're working on, I'm volunteering to be in that group, and I've been working on that, is how do we, how do we invest in Matt Kelly? What can we do together as a community? So, Commissioner McCurdy and other leaders are working on that strategy. We're also looking at the underperforming schools that have high Hispanic population descent. And I'm sorry, my grandson just arrived home from his little preschool. So, forgive me for the noise, but I just want to, it's a balance, Brian, and I'm committed, and I use my time and energy to sit on those groups. I know that work has been done, or attempted to be done, at Matt Kelly before, but I really feel hopeful this time that we have a new principal. We have a new director of housing, for public housing in that area, and I feel, and a school board trustee, Evelyn Garcia, on that group, leading that, and that's how I think the balance is going to come.
Okay, so, let's dig a little deeper, because you used Matt Kelly, and you've talked about in other places that are Hispanic that are all performing. What do you think are the root causes? Why do you think they are lower performers? Just give me your opinion, and I'll give you my thoughts on it.
Well, lower performing, what I've observed in Matt Kelly so far, is that it's generational, that the parents of the kids that go to the school, it's generational poverty, and we've tried to, we've tried different strategies to say, what could we do differently, right? Unless you see something different, unless those kids go outside of that environment. So, that would be a strategy to, one is the exposure of even Southern Nevada, right? There's some kids that don't go out of that neighborhood. So, I would say that would be one strategy. The principal and leadership is key. That principal dictates the culture, attracts the teachers, dictates parent engagement, so I think that would be the second. And then the third thing is pulling in those resources beyond just the general resources that are available. Like, right now, the general, I would say, would include welfare, food vouchers. How's it beyond that? I'm talking about pulling in resources from, like, the local workforce board, like Boys Town, that has a mentoring program. So, that would be just the top of my head.
Okay. Have you spent any significant time in any of the lower-performing schools?
Yes.
Okay. Which ones?
So, right now, in my, in my district and District F, they would be, the, most of them are a minimum three-star, but outside of District F, I would, I would say, like, Matt Kelly, like, and I'm thinking, I just blanked on the Hispanic one that's named after the, that's near the park. I can see it in my head. Sorry, I can't think of the name. I see the face of the individual. But, and there, it's on the east side, the east side of town, near the park there, where we have our partnerships with the harbor. It's those schools in those areas that have high ethnic populations.
So, you said you spent time in it. In what capacity have you spent time in there?
As a legislator, right, during reading week, or as a, now as a workforce development professional, because educating the teachers and the principals about the harbor for those kids who make a mistake, and instead of sending them to the juvenile detention, figuring out resources to wrap around those individuals.
Okay. And I ask that, because as I told you, I have an undergrad in electrical engineering, and I have an MBA. I spent two months in Swanigan. And again, one of the lower-performing places as a substitute teacher, to have a clear understanding, because many of the people who talk about the solutions, they've never really been in there long enough. It's one thing to go in there and be parts of stuff. There is a solution, and it is not school choice. It is a decision to basically staff the schools by any means necessary, even if it means bringing in retired people, hopefully, that have a cultural identity with the people that they are trying to instruct, to come in and instruct. And I'll give you this example. When I came into Swanigan, they had no teachers in their math classes. They had nothing but substitute teachers. Most of the substitute teachers lasted a week. I stayed there for two months. I did not have a teaching degree. I had no desire to have a teaching degree, but I have a very good understanding of math. When I sat in there and they saw, here is a black man, culturally, he's not afraid of us. He's going to treat us with respect, but hold them accountable. And I saw people go from Fs to Bs. I saw people learning, not because I was a teacher, but because I could connect to the students, and I do have an understanding of math. We have to stop coming up with all these excuses. Yes, economics is a major player, but the truth of the matter is, we do not staff the schools with the worst, with the worst results, have the worst staff. And you can't warehouse kids, and then at the end of the semester, give them a C, so that you won't have an uproar, and then come on and point it. Yes, economics is a major issue, but it's not. Because you see, I went to Gary Roosevelt. We had a swath of economics. I was middle-class. We dealt with people who were in the projects. We had people who had money. And we were able to be successful, because we had a teaching crew of people who lived in our community, who looked like us, and were vested in the success of our communities. See, we won't talk about the true problems of the school system. When you have teachers that live in Henderson, teachers who live in Summerlin, teachers who don't look like the people they're teaching, they have no vested interest in the success of those students. Many times, if you don't have the cultural understanding of what's going on, they can't control those students. The students will tend to test them, and they don't know how to deal with those tests, because they tested the heck out of me. And they realize at the end, I had a young Hispanic man, a little kid, who said, "Mr. Harris, when you first came in, I couldn't stand you. I couldn't wait for you to leave. Now I'm learning math, and I hate the fact that you're leaving." We got to stop trying to come up with all, spending all this money with consultants and talking about for and against, and say, "Look, we need to staff these places by any means necessary with people that can teach, whether they have a teaching degree or not, and pay them." You know, if you're, if you're not staffed, and you're paying $8 or $9 or $10 for a substitute who is a babysitter, then you get exactly what you got. If you turned around and you brought in retired people who look like me, with the credentials I have, who can teach math, or who can teach science, or who can teach the STEM ideology, but we don't want to be a teacher, but we'll fill in, but pay us, and pay us handsomely to do it. And you would find that the results would go up almost overnight. Even put a bonus tie to it, so people would stay there for the whole year, instead of saying, "I'm bouncing." See, we spend too much time talking about I'm for and I'm against, and giving, yes, poverty is an issue. It's a direct correlation, because also, teachers don't want to go and teach in a poverty-level issue, because they have to deal with the problems of a lower economic idea, issues that they can, they don't have to deal with in Henderson and in Summerlin. It comes back to staffing, and we got to stop basically making all these excuses. Staff this place appropriately. Stop talking about school choice. Put the money into, even if you want to have, we're going to have aides in here. We're going to call them aides, so they're not teachers. So, if we got a substitute teacher, they're a substitute teacher, but they've got an aide in here who's getting paid quite a bit of money to be that aide all year long, until you get a teacher, but they have specific objectives to teach these kids. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I do.
So, we got to think out the box, and I've said this to Jawa. I came to a teachers when I did this and told them that. But politically, people tend to want to go to their safe zones. So, I wanted to let you know there, I'm looking for people who are going to stop saying the rhetoric of either party or either what, and start looking at what's really happening with these kids. Because fundamentally, again, I have an engineering background. The highest amount, but I don't need that to know this. The highest amount of substitute teachers are in the higher, in the areas with the highest amount of black and brown kids, which directly correlates to their ability to perform. If we focus on the problems, and then plus, I'm going to tell you something. Whether people want to admit it or not, if you have a relationship culturally with the people who are in your schools, you will tend to act right. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, yes.
And so, we have to stop talking about, you know, this, these, the key buzzwords that sound good, and start figuring out the root cause. So, that's, I'm going to get off my soapbox, because I'm actually here to interview you, but I wanted to give you a tidbit of issues of what's going on, because whoever wins, be it yourself or your opponent, I'm going to be saying the same thing to them that I'm saying to you. So, let's continue to go forward. Tell me, we kind of talked on that, but we're going to come back to school board.
Martinez Elementary. Sorry, that's, I just remembered.
Obviously, there was a big, big issue with the school board, with the hiring and the firing. The firing of Jawa, bringing him back, and, I mean, it's been a mess. Give me your opinion on that whole scenario. Should he have been fired? Should he not have been fired? Was it handled right? What do you think that the board should have done? Just give me your opinion.
Well, it's easy to play Monday, Monday morning quarterback, right? I would have done this, I would have done that. If I were the head coach, I would have done. Look, for me, I can just share my personal experience. For me, Dr. Hatta has worked on workforce development projects and programs that are multi-generational, focused on kids that look like you and I, and expanding that. So, I don't know. I wasn't, I would, you know, can't make that choice. I, I know that if, as a small business owner myself as well, I would have not ever treated an employee that way. That's not how I handle myself. I have had to let people go.
Well, I want to make sure, when you're talking about the employee, you're talking about the superintendent, correct?
Yeah, because the school board has one employee. It's the superintendent. That's it. That's all that they can control, right? And I don't know, for you, if you, if you put yourself in this situation, if you were buying another business, would you automatically go in there and say, "I would have, you know, let ex-employee go"? No, you don't. That's not how you conduct yourself. So, that's why I said, for me, a little hard to answer that question. One, I would not go in there making that decision. Number two, do I think that it could have been handled more professionally? Absolutely. I mean, are, us doing that was shared across the US? And it just, you know, that's not the kind of professionalism that I conduct myself with. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay. Well, as you said, the board is there. They are the ones who are supposed to evaluate and make a decision. So, let me kind of put it like corporate America, where I'm from, or used to be. You're on the Board of Directors. Your CEO has been there for X amount of years. You're, you started losing money, you're still losing money, you're not seeing any improvement. You have to make the decision, do I go a different direction or do I not? If you're the board, the tough decisions are to look at, are the numbers going, trending the right way? Are the things happening right? So, one of the things, if the school board is significantly there for the people, they have to make the tough decisions on what happens. I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent, but it seems like we haven't seen improvement, any type of improvement. We're still at the bottom. There are still no plans to get to the future. So, if you're in the role, if we pay the kind of money we're paying a CEO, pretty much, and you're not delivering, and it doesn't seem like you have a good relationship with the people, like I said, you're the employee, not, and so, if you're the A good relationship with the people. Like I said, you're the employee, not, and so if you're the employee. And you can't handle your ship as the CEO. Then tough decisions have to be made because you're giving, you're being given too much money. You know, hell, I could come in there, pay me that kinda money and I guarantee you, my results would be better than, than they are now. Uh, so I ask that because accountability is at the school board. So let me ask you a question. If you're on the school board. And you don't see improvement and you don't see things, are you, would you be willing to pull the trigger to bring in someone else to improve? The uh, the, the, the uh, school boards.
It, it, it would depend, Brian, right? That's not a yes, no answer, right? Until you get into that. But yes, I have been in situations where if it's not the right fit. If it's uh, you don't see the turnaround. Um, then yes, I, I have let employees go before, if I haven't seen the improvement. I, and that's why I was sharing with myself personally, the projects that we have worked on with CCSD. I have seen the improvement. I have seen the uh, increase in getting all kids tested. Um, at second grade to see if they're gifts, gifted and talented and putting them to those programs. I've seen that. You know why? Because I volunteer to be on that blue ribbon task force that the superintendent put together. So are they, um, are, is everything a green light? No. Um, are some things improving? Yes. Is it a long-term journey? Yes. And that's why one of the things that I opened up with is. Being a better partner with the business community in order to solve these, cuz it's not just the school district's problem.
Yep, but she also had to be a very, the, with the, with the, with the uh, the, the, the people, the, the um. Not just the teachers, but the teachers and the um, uh, parents. Because here's I say, I, I looked at, and I give Swan again cuz I saw this. Understaffed, no staff, at the end of the semester, let's give everybody a C. And you got kids here who can't do basic arithmetic. I'm talking about multiplication and division. And they're supposed to be doing algebra and we're pushing them along through the system and we're just trying to test them. We're not trying to teach them, we're trying to test them. And so when you look at what's going on, uh, to me. Though, uh, and again, this was, this was two years ago or something, but I guarantee you, this was pre-pandemic. That it is still business as usual in the lower performing areas. If you can, it's one thing about testing people. Second, it's like, what are you doing to change the outcome? It's been two years. We've gone through a pandemic. We're here now. What is your focus on the schools that are underperforming and what have you put in place? To help them perform more than just where we're giving them more tests. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, and that's why I'm volunteering to do the pilots at, you know, Matt Kelly. And um, we're identifying a school right now that is heavy Hispanic population. Um, cuz there's more than just one, right, underperforming. But we've gotta figure out what is gonna work. So that we can upscale it.
You gotta staff, and I keep telling you, the simple so- solution is you have to staff them. If you don't staff them, you can talk about fixing it, you can talk, talk, talk. If you don't staff them with people who, who are there and motivated to teach them. The core principles of one plus one is two, two times two is four, two, two plus two is four. If they don't know that and they go to junior high school, we've lost them forever.
Yeah, but Brian, if staffing is across the board and not just in education, right? And I know that for the first time, the, the entities that are focused on teaching. The institutions like Nevada State College, like CSN, that are focused on developing the teacher pipeline. Their, their, the presidents are meeting together to figure out from K through twelve through uh. CSN and, and beyond, if, but if they're not the only industry that's struggling, Brian. Staffing is a problem for restaurants.
I, I understand.
So how, how, I mean, and I know that my mentor just took herself off. Of the task force for trying to hire teachers a- and for retention because. It is a, a massive problem. I'm not saying it can't be solved, but one of her recommendations is. Irene, CCSD should not lead that conversation. It has to be uh, business-led. Um, and so, cuz I asked her, why did you take yourself off? It's one of the high priorities. Um, there was not. It, it wasn't conducive um, meetings to come up with solutions.
Okay, so let me ask you, um, and, and I appreciate your candor because that's how we find out who you are as a person. And yeah, and I, I, I need to understand how we're going to improve the school systems. Um, there's been talk of breaking up the school systems. What's your opinion on breaking up the school systems?
Uh, there again, it's a double-edged sword because you went back to what you said, Brian. Do I think that we're too massive? Yes, to, to make any change is incredibly slow. Um, so with that said, but then you're gonna have the haves and the have-nots. Because I think that Henderson, Summerland, they're gonna thrive. Southwest emerging, they're gonna thrive. But it's those inner-city schools. It's not gonna happen. So I don't know what the solution is yet. I know that the county commission. Um, uh, the commissioners are talking about it. I know the business community is talking about it. Um, the pre- the presidents of the chambers have talked, um, to look at what could we do? I don't know what the answer is yet, but there's a lot of things to take into consideration. Uh, if we go in that direction.
What is your personal? Should we leave it together or should we break it up?
No, my, I, I voted, um, and when I was a legislator, I did vote uh, and supported um. The breaking up the school district.
Okay, I just wanna know what your opinion of, and uh, again, I have very much concern. Yeah, I'm living in Henderson. If I only cared about myself, I would have no issues with that. But I truly believe that you will not get equity if you break up the school system and that's not the solution. Because if you, if you pieced out and looked at Henderson, we're probably not thirty-ninth and, or forty-ninth in the state. If you looked at Summerland, we're probably not forty-ninth in the straight. So if you looked at the other places now, they says, we no longer at the bottom. You guys take care of your problems over there.
Yeah, and I know, that's what I mean. It's not a simple solution, right?
Okay.
It's not, it's not a simple solution and we've, and it's got to be done collectively together. Is it gonna happen overnight? Nope.
Gotcha. So, and I, and I appreciate, I really do, Irene, because we will be do- doing some. Uh, we do endorsements every, every time. And we'll be talking to everybody who talks to us, so it says a lot to you. I do ask a question. Now, this, this is off of the school board and going back to uh, us understanding. Ideologies and beliefs. There are a lot of things going on right now, obviously. With uh, what happened at the Capitol, what ha- what's happening across, we're probably uh. As divided in a, a country as I've ever seen in the last sixty years of my life. Uh, well, sixty-one of my life, but I didn't know what was going on probably for the first ten, fifteen. Um, first, give me your opinion on uh, what your thoughts are uh. On the, the state of where we are as a nation and your beliefs on what's driving it? And how do we come together?
Um, well, that's a heavy question, so. Um, I'm very proud. I can just start from our Nevada delegation. So from our Nevada delegation, I think that they're representing our state well. Um, at the federal level, they conduct themselves appropriately. Uh, they are constantly fighting um. For Nevadans and right now, it's a concentrated effort to get as met as. As many federal funds available, whether it's through transportation, education, or workforce. So I can speak from that part. I, I, I am proud at the way that they represent our state. Um, is uh, they are part of different caucuses, right? Where it's bipartisan, so it's different sides of the aisle. And I, I applaud them for that. To be willing to work across the aisle to get things done. Um, it, does everybody conduct themselves that way? No. Um, my time at the legislature, I know that I did conduct myself that way. But I also took extra training that they would offer to legislators on, on decorum. And coming to um, finding common ground. Uh, and so I would say that. Uh, I can only speak from the state and from locally that I'm around people that are focused in that direction.
Okay, so I always ask this question because there's so much devices this. In twenty twenty, who won the election, Biden or, or Trump?
Biden.
Okay, thank you. Uh. We have, and I'm gonna ask you this issue and you can give me your opinion on it. Uh, this is a difficult question, but I ask everybody because I need to know what your thoughts are about it. The black community is very concerned about the rise of white nationalism and fascism. We are very concerned and we should not be the only people concerned. Because there are things that are going on in this, in, in, in all communities that are dangerous to everyone involved. Uh. My goal is to fight fascism wherever it may be. And it has, it has creeped unfortunately into the political arenas. Uh, to the point of something we've never seen since the nineteen twenty. Uh, radicalization of, of Germany into fascism. Do you think we're at that point? Do you think there's some issues we should be concerned of? Do you believe, do you agree or disagree with me that there's some issues here right now that are so divisive? It's tearing our country apart.
Um, short answer uh, would be yes, that we should be alarmed and it should always be at the forefront. Because um, it's a process, right? Um, just like um, when Hitler was in his dictatorship. It was a process. It didn't happen overnight. It was small steps. And so my short answer was yes, we should be alarmed. Um, it, it should always be at the forefront. We should be looking at that. When we're discussing policy, when we're discussing who gets elected at the local level, at your Clark County Commission level. At your city council, um, at your state legislature. Um, so the short answer would be yes. Uh, I. There is a majority of diversity. In the legislature and, and so I have, I have hope. Um, and I know it's at the forefront of the executive branch, uh, and also at the, at the local level. So um, should we sit on our laurels? No, us as private citizens should be mindful. Um, at every, at every level, whether that's a school board or your PTA.
Okay, thank you. I ju- I, I needed your opinion because again. Ideology is, we as a people say, we have to understand your ideology, your beliefs, your values. Uh, not just the school board issues and, and everything else because we are in dangerous times. And that's why I ask these questions. Some people, it's uncomfortable to talk about. But if we don't discuss them, we can't defeat them. And I tell people, you're either part of the problem or part of the solution. If you stay silent while uh, white nationalism slash fascism grows, then I tell people you're part of the problem. If you're vocal and you're fighting it, then you're part of the solution. So I thank you for your candor and, and opinions. So I've taken a lot of your time. I, I thank you, uh, Ms. Adams for being very open and honest to us. We have to make a decision here in November. We have to look at and make sure that our kids get the best opportunity. To be successful. We have to challenge the school board to think out of the box. We have to challenge them to drop partisan beliefs and look at what's the right thing for the children. Like you say, it is not an easy solution or it would have been taken care of in the past. I thank you for taking that time. I'm gonna let you take the time to take us home by telling us again who you are. What you're running for and give us a little synopsis of why we should vote for you.
Thank you, Brian. Well, first, thank you for having me and thank you for you stepping out and creating the opportunity for. Uh, people to listen to the candidates. So thank you. Uh, so in, in closing, my name is Irene Bustamante Adams. Um, I have extensive experience in handling budgets. And um, large, complex problems, both from my private sector side and from the public sector. Um, do I know everything yet? No. But if you know me personally, I am a hard worker. I am a roll-up-your-sleeves, get, um, you know. Do the work and, and not be so much of a, a talker, but a doer. Um, I do categorize, categorize myself as the problem solver and a consensus builder. And uh, I think that that's our, those are key things that you need. In order to uh, work within the school board. Um, those two things are definitely needed. So Irene Bustamanta Adams, a candidate for school board trustee District F. Like in fabulous, and I look forward to um, your support.
Thank you very much. Again, this is Brian Harris, the independent black voters. Our vote is not free. We will vet candidates nonpartisan. This is a nonpartisan race. We vet Democrats, Republicans. We ask them the tough questions and we look for the honest answers. We thank you again, Irene. We look forward to not just talking to you now, but in the future. This is the independent black voter signing out. I'm gonna hit the, stop the recording.